I'd like to call this work session to order at 5:31 PM. Go home.
Alex Cantú present.
Mary Hernández present.
Escucho present.
Nereida Cantú present.
Alvaro Benavides present. Dr. Science, I do declare it warm.
Thank you, Dr. Benavides. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comments?
We have no public comments.
If there are none, we'll move on to item number five, budget work session number three, and we'll start with the 2021-2022 average daily attendance.
Thank you, Dr. Benavides. Mr. Joel Trevino, our chief financial officer, will begin the work session with that item.
Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Science, and community present. Today, we'll be presenting to you the budget work session number three, give you additional information as to the budget process that we currently are working on. Okay? If you return your binders, you have the presentation. If you turn over to page three, first of all, we're going to be talking about the 21-22 average daily attendance. Okay? On page three, we have the ADA adjustment. On page three, we have the average daily attendance that is going to affect us for adjustment that is the state was authorized by the commissioner during the month of March, and this is how the average daily adjustment is going to benefit the district. TEA will be extending the current adjustment that they had proposed for the first six weeks. Now, they're going to do it for the four-six weeks periods of the 21-22 school year. Under this plan, the target rate will be based on the attendance rate from the 2019-2020, first through four-six weeks. TEA has already published those targets, and for La Jolla ISD is 94.97. That is the target average daily attendance. Okay? No adjustments will be made for the fifth or sixth-six weeks in this current adjustment, and there will be no hold harmless to offset enrollment declines, unfortunately, for our district. And TEA will not be using extra funds to pay for the extension of the ADA adjustment. Next page, we have this ADA adjustment is also going to affect those special allotments that are based on average daily attendance or FTEs. For example, bilingual ADA, CTE ADA, and speciallet ADA. Those entitlements would also be adjusted based on the same target rate. Okay? On slide number five, this is how the average daily attendance adjustment is going to work. We would be calculating the total days present. So there you would see that we have the total days present by six weeks, and we have a total of 2,187,315 eligible days present. Then that number is going to be divided by the days' membership, and of course, we also have to listen by six weeks, which gives us a total of 2,511,166 total days' membership. That gives us an actual average attendance rate that we had for the first four-six weeks of the 21-22 school year of 87.1. The district's TPAR, the total percentage attendance rate, the target percentage attendance rate, it's 94.97. Our attendance rate is 87.1. That means that we do qualify for this adjustment, so our ADA will be brought up to 94.97. So how we do that is we list the, at the bottom of page five, we list the average daily attendance for the first, second, third, and four-six weeks, and we get an average. That average is divided by the 87.1% attendance rate that we had. And multiplied by the 94.97%. Okay? That gives us an average daily attendance adjusted rate, attendance rate, attendance of 21,270. That number is going to replace our ADA for the first, second, third, and four-six weeks. Okay? Then, to propose the actual ADA for the district, we add the ADA for the fifth and the six-six weeks to come up with the average daily attendance for the year. In the fifth-six weeks, that six weeks just ended a week or so ago, our ADA at that point was 19,620. We are projecting that for the six-six weeks, it's about the same, so giving us an annual average daily attendance of 20,720. Okay? On page six, since that average daily attendance is not only going to apply to the total ADA, it's also going to apply to the special pops, this calculation we need to do for each one of the special populations. Okay? And we have the data there on page six. Okay? On page seven, we went ahead, this is something that you've seen before, was presented at a previous work session. Here is the potential loss that the district may have because of the lower average daily attendance compared to the budgeted. We have on the first column, what was our PIM snapshot student enrollment in 2020-2021? Back then, we had 26,638 students. And what is the current enrollment? This is the next column, and as of when? So as of October 20th, we had an enrollment of 24,120, and down the line. I'm not going to read each one of those numbers. And then we see the difference, how that compares to the enrollment that we had on the PIM's 2021 snapshot date. And on the average, it's about 2,100, 2,200 difference in enrollment. Now, what did we use to project the 21-22 budget? We used 23,033. That is our projected ADA that we had projected originally. Now, by six weeks, this is our ADA, the numbers that I discussed on the previous page, of 18,699, then 20,729 for the second-six weeks, for the third-six weeks is 20,367, for-six weeks is 18,240, fifth-six weeks is 19,620. Well, those numbers, the first-four-six weeks is going to be adjusted, and that number is going to be replaced by 21,270. Unfortunately, that ADA adjustment does not apply to the fifth nor the six-weeks ADA. So our average daily attendance up to the fifth-six weeks is at 20,940 average daily attendance. That compared to our projected average daily attendance of 23,033, we have a 2,093 less ADA. Based on the 23,033, the projected state funding that we had anticipated was $230 million. Based on the adjusted ADA of 20,940, our projected state funding is $207 million. We have a potential funding loss of about $23 million. If you recall back in when we did the first presentation, that number was at about $27, $30 million around there. So the adjustment did help us, unfortunately, because our enrollment is going down. There is no hold harmless for that, so that is something that we would have to continue monitoring. We're hoping that our ADA for the fourth, the six-six weeks comes in a little bit higher. That would help us out. I want to remind you that this ADA that we have here does not include our SADA enrollment that is going on. That should help us out, and that won't actually be determined until after we do the PIM submission and submit it to the state. So any questions?
When we added the SADA, how much difference did it make?
The second, not the first year, but the second year that we implemented the SADA program, we generated about an addition of $4 million. And I don't recall the actual number that we did, but I believe based on the numbers that we have right now, there are about 1,000-something, más o menos?
We were able to increase for the six weeks an additional 1,000 students, so we're about 2,400 students. As far as the summer, for summer school, the majority of students will be able to qualify for SADA. There's just going to be a small population that will not, for example, our GT students and so forth. So the majority of the students for summer school will be able to qualify for the SADA program.
And those 2,000, what does that equate to in terms of money?
I would say approximately, maybe about another eight to nine million dollars, approximately. It just depends on the average, how they're going to average them out, because they go through the number of maintenance and so forth on that. I know, like I said, the second year that we implemented, if I'm not mistaken, the ADA was about 450, 500 ADA, and that generated about $4 million. So hopefully, that number will be doubled for this year, and that would generate about 8 million.
Okay, so then we-
So we're hoping for that. And we'll closely monitor that once, as soon as the information is loaded to TEA, we'll get a better picture on that.
So then our shortfall would probably be like 11 million?
Plus or minus.
Más o menos.
Any other questions? I mean, we're glad that the commissioner went back and adjusted the first-four-six weeks, so that really helped us a lot, I mean, compared to the other. The next item on the agenda is our projection of enrollment of average daily attendance for this coming school year, and that will start on page nine. On page nine, what we did is, and this information was shared with the board also previously, we went and did some adjustments as far as coming up with the average daily attendance percentage that we've had. What we did, we are taking the enrollment that we had on, back on the end of the third-six weeks, which was December, and that was 24,605. We are reducing the 1.69% normal decline that we've had over the past couple of years, the average decline, and that amounts to about 415. And then IDEA impact, about an additional 765, bringing our projected enrollment at about 23,425 students. That, and that represents about a 4.8% decline in the student enrollment. Then, we took the average daily attendance that we had for 2014-15 school year all the way to the 2018-2019 school year. Those were true years reflecting actual average daily attendance percentages, and we went ahead and added the 21-22 school year, this current year that we're in. We did not include the previous two years because the ADA on those numbers, they were not a true ADA, because we had that synchronous online and so forth, so those numbers were a little bit inaccurate. So we came up with a 91.37%. That we multiplied times 23, 425, and we are resulting with an average daily attendance of about 21,404. And that is the number of ADA projection that we would be using when completing, doing our revenue estimates for the 23, 22-23 school year. Any questions on this?
And based on this resulting ADA and the information we just discussed, what would our shortfall be?
Actually, we have not done those calculations because we're waiting on the property values to be released, Dr. B. So those, I believe they were released early this week or late last week, so we're just waiting to get the actual documentation for them. And then we'll start doing our revenue projections for that. Okay? Any other questions?
No, it's just alarming, the 4.8 decrease in enrollment equals to over 1,000 kids. I mean, it seems like a small percentage, but when you put it in ADA enrollment, it makes a big impact.
Yes, it is. If we move on to the next page, it's the graph, and we went ahead and updated it. We see that we've been losing about 1,200 students every year since 2015. Slight decrease, so it's been going down. If you see here, the line in blue is the actual enrollment. The red is average daily attendance. That's why when I said that we did not include the 19 and the 20, because that ADA was up there, so it was not a true average daily attendance. Currently, unfortunately, our actual average daily attendance that we have before adjustments is at 19,531. It's way down. We have students enrolled, but they have not come into school. They're not attending school. So our projection, if you see here in 2023, it's at 23,425, and the average daily attendance, we're saying that it's going to be 21,404.
How do you make that prediction, Mr. Trevino? I'm just curious.
Based on the previous page that we discussed, here, when we said we first projected the enrollment of 23,425 by taking the enrollment that we had at the end of the third-six weeks, minus the students, the normal decrease that we've had, plus the IDEA giving us a 23,425, times the attendance rate of 91.37, given as a 21,404.
Thank you.
So we're seeing this, the, sorry, the 22 data points are actuals through the fifth-six weeks, so that is our average daily attendance, unadjusted, of course. Okay? And the projected is based on the numbers that we just shared previously. Any other questions? I know it's alarming as far as the numbers. It would be very nice if we start seeing some growth on our student enrollment, but it's not, it's not happened, it has not happened since a few years back. And of course, this year, not sure exactly why our students are not coming to school. Maybe it's parents are afraid or things like that, so our ADA is a bit kind of low. Any other questions?
Is there a school that really stands out and that their ADA is really, really good that we could learn from?
That's something we'll look into it, Dr. B, and see exactly what type of activities we're doing.
I mean, just to, just to see what else can be done, so that, I think it'll be important that we can raise it up a little for the six-six weeks, like you said, just to add a little bit, and, I mean, anything we can do to-
I know we do have some of our campuses, we do have some campuses that have higher ADA than others, and I know Student Services Department is working with them on providing incentives for attendance, but also monitoring attendance, making parent phone calls, making parent visits. I know we just started a district procedure where we're meeting with parents with kids that have high absenteeism, and so our Student Services Department does have different initiatives going, as well as our principals are putting incentives in place. However, it still has been difficult to get our attendance back to the 94, 95 standards that we've had in the past. It has improved, but it has not gotten to the 95% goals that we've had.
That is correct, Dr. Science. Right now, at the elementary, we're averaging 92, 93 when it comes to the attendance. I know at the middle schools, we're averaging like around 92. It's more at the high schools where, when we're looking at attendance, that we're averaging that 85, 84. So it's working with the high schools where we need to go ahead and improve our, the attendance. Started our district truancy court, that way we could go ahead and be meeting with the parents, the students, and also our principals or assistant principals. They're part of the committee and trying to assist in that way. Right? So that's something that we're working on as well. And then also, as far as the enrollment, one of the things that we are doing and we're noticing is that we are bringing in the students, is keeping the students. That's what we need to focus on, and we're working on as well.
Maybe starting a competition with the high schools, you know, something, getting a little committee of students and asking them, you know, what are some things that they could do to improve, and maybe a competition among the three high schools, because kids are very competitive, so maybe that would help. I don't know, I'm just trying to think what else could be done, because 85 is concerning.
Anything else? Okay, if we move on to the next page, we're going to be discussing the 22-23 special projects. Departments and campuses submit their requests. As a cabinet, we review our special projects, and this is a listing of the special projects that we are anticipating included into our budget for the 22-23 school year. Here, we have the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. We have $118,140, that is a request to provide a pre-K3 snacks to those, to our students, so that definitely we're going to include in there. Then, there is attendance incentives that is going to be campus-based. This allotment is being provided to each campus in addition to their campus allotment that they get, and the amount of 254,000, so that they can do incentives, attendance incentives at the campus level.
For the high school level, where the kids included, to see what the kids want?
Yes, ma'am. All campuses were included in this allotment.
No, I know, but were the kids included to give their input?
No, no, ma'am, no.
To see what would work for them, like what they would like. Because sometimes, I remember when I was principal, and I was giving one big prize for perfect attendance, and when I had a group of kids, they told me, "Why don't you do three smalls, so three of us can win instead of just one?" And I hadn't thought of that, but it was good that they told me that, and so more kids got to win, more kids got motivated, and so I'm just saying, if, when this figure or this amount was figured out, if the high school kids were given an opportunity to provide input, to see what they would like, you know, we need to involve them. They're very creative, and times are different right now, and so we need to listen to the kids.
That's something that we could do, we could survey our students.
You could actually have like the student council or, you know, initiate that for you all and get their input. I think it's a super, super good idea.
Thank you.
Moving on, also from the Student Services Department, there was $36,492, and that was to continue with the memorandum of understanding with La Jolla ISD and the county. Next item, we have $67,000 also from Student Services, and this is for student attendance incentives for each six weeks, and this is where the little competition among the schools, I believe we provide an award to each one of the, we break down the elementary into three different groups, that's what we did this year, and then the high schools and the special campuses and middle schools, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, this year, we did it by semester.
I mean, we're making, trying to make every effort on the student incentives to make sure that our students come to school. One of the other things, under college readiness, there's $153,000, and that's to continue with the National Hispanic Institute, to continue in offering that benefit to our students to participate. For our public relations, there's an additional $23,000, and that's to upgrade the OCR on our website, the OCR, making it has been. Under physical plan, there's $120,000-
Is that OCR, the Office of Civil Rights? Is that?
Office of-
Yes? For all the requirements and all?
Yes, this website would keep us, would ensure that we're following all the OCR regulations.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
There's $120,000 for the physical plan, and that is to do some repairs here at this building, especially, I believe, in the front. There's some repairs that are needed, and that's what we're allocating for that. Also, there's an additional $150,000 for the Jimmy Carter West Gym, the wrapping of the floors in that gymnasium. Also for physical plans, there's $135,000 to purchase a backhoe and a tractor. There's $150,000 also for physical plan, and this is for La Juarez-Lincoln High School baseball and softball, to build a press box with bleachers for softball and a baseball. There's $1.2 million for a scoreboard for La Jolla High, the stadium, as to remove and replace the current scoreboard that we have. Then, there are some roof repairs also for La Jolla High School of $2.5 million that we're trying to incorporate into our budget.
I have a question on that. Didn't we do renovations to the roof where we took out the skylights and the sky, the natural light, and we refixed the roof?
I think you can respond to-
Yes, yes, you are correct. All the skylights were replaced, but the replacement of the skylights didn't reduce or take away from the water that leaks in other parts of the building. So it needs a lot of renovation, that roof does in La Jolla. So those areas where the skylights are at have been addressed, there are no leaks there. There's other areas that do need a lot of upgrade.
I think what has happened over the years at that building, because we have spent some money, but it's been kind of doing patchwork, and the roof, the whole complete roof itself has never been replaced. I think it's as old as the building, and I'm not sure how old that building is, but this is a complete roof renovation of the main building and one other section-
Where the students, Hall A, Hall B, Hall C, that's where we're having most of the issues have had for many years, I think. So we got an engineer to assess, but good question.
It's the old high school, so I'm sure it's, we need some help. It'll be a project, I mean, it's a big project, just, you know, the logistics of the students and all that, it'll-
Yes, we'll need to work through that, and our sections will be worked on.
Thank you.
Moving on, the next department is Fine Arts. We have $100,000 for Chavez Middle School, and that is to boys' tuxedos, girls' dresses, megavox, and a PA system for that campus. Also, $50,000 for Arvin García Middle Schools. Eastwind, the ready, Cello, and Chris for Bass. $200,000 for Juarez-Lincoln High School, that's for some equipment, instruments for that particular campus. $30,000 for La Jolla High School, girls' dresses and men's tuxedos. $200,000 for La Jolla High School, also band instruments. $200,000 for Palmyo High School, instruments also. $50,000 for Trevino Middle School, instruments, band instruments. And now, we are also trying to incorporate $1.1 million for the Transportation Department, be able to purchase seven regular school buses and three special need buses. And also physical plans, we have $249,000 for outdoor facilities at the Juarez-Lincoln campus. Giving us a total anticipated special projects of about $7,860,000. This, of course, we will incorporate into the budget, and once we have our revenue estimate, and see how we end up with after this. Any other questions? Next section, we wanted to give you an update on the employee benefits health insurance. If you turn on to page 14, this is the same information with the update as of March 31st. As of March 31st, we've collected $25,586,000, and we've had expenditures, total operating expenditure of $29,821, put in as a deficit as of right now of $4.2 million in our health insurance fund. As you can see, we've seen that for the last few years, that we have been supplementing or using our workers' comp fund. We most likely will probably bring a budget amendment to the board later on to use some of our, we have depleted some of our workers' fund money, we would need some general fund money to be able to incorporate, to balance out this fund. If you turn on to the next page, as you can see, the very first line item here, we have the medical claims, they have increased. Last year, we had 19, almost $20 million worth of claims, and that was only for a 10-month period, okay, because that's when we changed the fiscal year. This year, right now, we are at about $20 million, and we still have three more months to go in the school year. So as you can see, the claims have gone up, and with their, this fund needs attention, and we need to do some possible increases to the contributions being made to the fund in order to continue to offer healthy, a well-rounded health insurance plan to our employees. Any questions?
No, it's not a question, but I mean, we're still going through a pandemic, so-
So of course, the medical needs have taken different direction.
You are right. On the next page, it's just to give you a sample of how our RX rebates have come into play. When we made the change two years ago, that we went with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And we are getting the RX rebates upfront. You can see the increase that we've had. Last year, over a 10-month period, we were at 1.1 compared to the previous year of $573,000. So we are getting a much better deal with Blue Cross Blue Shield when it comes to the RX rebates.
Explain that, RX rebate?
These rebates is, let me see if I can do a good job on that one. It's, it's based on the name-brand medications. The insurance company, or in this case, Blue Cross Blue Shield, has agreements with them, and they get rebates. And they, in turn, reimburse us a portion of that, of those claims. When we were with Script Care previously, they, it was based on the actual claims that were happening. And it was a percentage that they were sending us. In this case, with Blue Cross Blue Shield, they are, they did it upfront. They said, "We're going to give you," I believe it's like $50 per month for employee of claims, of rebates every, every, every month for the whole year. So for this year, we anticipate to be maybe close to $2 million in rebates that they're giving us. And that is depends on the usage. One of the things, we had a conversation with our Blue Cross Blue Shield representative. When we made, made the change at the clinic, that we went back to generic only, they have seen a decrease in the amount of name-brand medications that are being used. But even with that, Blue Cross Blue Shield is still giving us the rebate upfront, so.
I was wondering if, how it related to the name-brand?
It's all related to the name-brand. On the next page, it's just a comparison of what, and you've seen this, the same information from the last presentation as to what the district, what La Jolla ISD contributes to the plan. We contribute $467 per employee per month. And we see Mission, and Mission has two plans. And they have different, it's an 80/20, but current, different deductibles and copays that they have in their plan. And they're contributing 450. McAllen pays 408. Edinburgh pays 504. Harlingen Jim, 478. Westleco, 582. P S A, 640. Shareland, 369. But they only offer two plan. And then this is the employees, what each employee pays. One of the recommendation in order, as we saw that, to try to make up that shortfall in our health insurance plan, we are recommending that we want to increase a district contribution by $63 per month. 700, that equates to $756 per year for, per employee, which will give us about approximately 3.1 additional funds going into the health insurance fund. And we're also proposing that the employee contribution be added to, be increased by $20 per month. Right now, our employees do not pay anything into the insurance plan. But as we can see, under the 70/30 plan, we see that Mission is asking their employees to pay $25.50. McAllen is asking to pay $52. Edinburgh, $70, and so forth. We at this, right now, do not, our employees do not contribute. So we are proposing that we ask our employees to contribute $20 a month, which is $240 a year. That would generate about $1 million that would go into our health insurance fund to help offset the current loss that we have and, and try to break even within, within our insurance plan. For these items, we will be having an agenda item going for board approval at the next board meeting. That way, we can start anticipating that within, at the time we were preparing the budgets. Any, any other questions? Okay, the next item, we, that we will be discussing. Any other questions on the budget for, anything that you might want to see?
How are we doing with time in, in the preparation of the budget? Since we're going to be, you know, it's going to be June. And, and, you know, we've been moving along with our work sessions. But how are we doing for you guys?
We have, I know this past year, we had a, our computer department, we've had some turnover in that department. And we are currently working, and a lot of our staff is new. I know HR has already done their portion as far as when it comes to positions. We just need to work on the actual employees so we can start doing our projections. And that is what we're currently working on. We're working very closely with the, with the Aleo, Wine Hammer, so they can assist us in doing, going through the actual process, the programming, the loading data, and so forth. I'm hoping that by the beginning of next week, we can start doing some calculations as far as different projections and things like that. I think we're, we're on target.
Based on our budget timeline?
Yeah.
We're, we're on target?
Yes, we are.
With our activities.
And when is our next work session?
We had planned it for the 11th, but we might be moving it for the 4th. Or maybe we can keep it on the 11th, the date of board meeting.
So first we can make?
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Okay, our next item is a discussion on the corrective action plan to improve procedures regarding purchasing and acquisition. And for this, Ms. Sylvia Zapata will be conducting this presentation. And the presentation is also attached on your binder.
Good afternoon, Dr. Ben Avides, School Board of Trustees, Dr. Science, and all administration and attendings present. So this is the corrective action plan for purchasing and acquisition.
I'm not, I'm not sure if it's, that you need to get closer to the microphone, Sylvia? Or adjust the microphones?
Okay, okay. So on March 23rd, 2022, earlier last month, our school board approved resolution number 2022. Thank you, Mr. Terina. So on March 23rd, 2022, our school board approved resolution number 2022-03 in regards to a, for administration to devise a corrective action plan in regards to procurement. And so we have four main points that we will be reviewing with our board this afternoon. These are derived from that resolution. And so the first one is the strengthening of local board policies that address purchasing and acquisition policies and procedures to limit arbitrary involvement by employees in the selection of district vendors and contracts. So Dr. Science, in coordination with Mr. Joel Trevino, and the four assistant superintendents, established the procurement policies and procedures advisory committee. The committee is comprised of 22 key administrators. And there's, in the presentation later on, we'll show you who those members are. We met on four separate dates. And we included the report as part of this presentation with the recommendations from the committee. So that's included in, in Appendix B. So we're going to cover the four points first. And then we'll go into the supportive documentation. So on point number two, is that the district will provide rigorous and in-depth training on purchasing and acquisition policies to all employees entrusted with these responsibilities. So on February 16th, 2022, we conducted a very rigorous and in-depth training session for all central office administrators. We had 120, 102 administrators that attended. And the supportive documentation with the login rosters is attached in Appendix C. Thirdly, was to engage with a consultant to conduct a policy review of all purchasing and acquisition policies and procedures in our district so we can develop policies to deter arbitrary engagement or involvement by the board of trustees in the evaluation and recommendation of vendors by school employees. So Mr. Joel Trevino, our chief financial officer, coordinated efforts and contracted with Mr. Noel Garza, CPA, to conduct that policy review. So the respective recommendations are attached in Appendix D. Additionally, on March 10th, Mr. Garza was here present before our school board of trustees and conducted a discussion based upon his review. Fourthly, the superintendent will take necessary steps to provide continuing education to the board of trustees regarding purchasing and acquisition within 90 days of the resolution that was approved on March 23rd. And on, on March 1st, even before that date, Dr. Science coordinated efforts. And we provided on that day, on March 1st of 2022, procurement training to our school board of trustees, which included training on procurement laws, the procurement process, bid ranking, and construction as well, which focused on vendor selection using the competitive sealed proposals process and the job order contracts. And that's included as Appendix D in our presentation. So Appendix A is a board resolution that was approved on March 23rd, which enumerates those four points we covered. Then it's followed by Appendix B. Appendix B is the recommendation document from the Procurement Policies and Procedures Advisory Committee. So these are the members of the advisory committee. The chair is Mr. Joel Trevino, our chief financial officer. I serve as co-chair. And we have our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, as well as key central office administrators that played a very important role in the development of these recommendations. We're very pleased with the involvement of the committee. They were very engaged and willing to participate in the process and provided very good recommendations, which we will cover next. We reviewed CH local policy. Specifically, the purchases that come before the board for approval, the 50,000 and above, with the exception of the categories that are listed there. In this particular area, the committee decided that they would recommend that we maintain that threshold at 50,000. They are concerned that if we were to lower that threshold, it would affect efficiency directly. So without jeopardizing our transparency and our commitment to our school board and our community, that we will be procurement compliant, we did, we did make recommendations in regards to other areas directly related to procurement that support this recommendation. So in the bid process, for example, currently, we process bids and proposals. And the administrator that's requesting, that department head that's requesting that procurement is highly involved with evaluation and recommendation process. Typically, they include staff from their department. So what the committee's recommendation is, which is in alignment with the external auditor's recommendation, is that we also include a, an administrator outside of that department to play a role in the evaluation and recommendation of those procurements. So that is a recommendation there. The second point that was addressed by the external auditor is that our bid process does not identify, does not address procedures utilized when our school board of trustees do not agree with a recommendation from administration. So further procedures should be developed and implemented to address and cure those situations. That was the, the recommendation from the external auditor. So what the Procurement Policies and Procedures Committee recommends is that we establish a code of silence. There are other school districts throughout the state that have a code of silence in place. And so what the code of silence means is that it would prohibit any vendor or organization that is trying to get a contract awarded to communicate with administration and our, and our school board of trustees during that period of time from the point that we initiate the procurement to the point of contract award. And so in doing that, it would eliminate sidebar conversations and influence that could potentially affect the award of that contract. Secondly, we would establish protocol in CAA regulation. That's not local policy, but regulation, which is still administered by TASB. And we would do this in coordination with our human resources department to provide guidance to our board of trustees addressing procurement action items. For example, if the board intends to postpone an agenda item related to procurement, for you to allow administration advance notice of the intent and afford administration an opportunity to provide an explanation detailing the rationale, the recommendation, and repercussions if the board elects not to take action. So in other words, if there's a strict timeline in place and the board was not to take action or intends to take action to postpone, then providing administration with advance notice, administration would be given an opportunity to explain what repercussions would occur if the board does not take action on that recommendation. Next is the requisitioning process. So at this time, all transactions valued at $15,000 and above, through the multiple awarded request for proposals, vendors require at least two quotes. So below that amount, we do not require quotes. That has been district procedure for a number of years. So the recommendation from the committee is that we bring down that threshold from $15,000 to $10,000. So in doing that, we will be stimulating additional competitive procurement. We would be reducing the exposure for purchases that escape the quotation process. And we will be promoting obtaining the best value to the district while increasing accountability in monitoring purchases for procurement compliance. Next, we have the spot purchase threshold quotation process. So at this time, that threshold is at $10,000. We always encourage all procurement to be processed through the awarded vendors, the vendors that have been awarded by our school board of trustees or through the purchasing cooperatives. But there are instances where there may be items that a certain department or campus might be looking for that are not available through those vendors. So that threshold right now is at $10,000. The committee recommends that we bring down that threshold from $10,000 to $5,000. And again, in doing so, we would be promoting the stimulation of additional competition, transparency, et cetera. Also, in regards to the vendor quotation process, there are different methods we have in place. It's the quotation form, using the vendor's website, using our e-commerce marketplace, et cetera. So what the recommendation there is that we allow additional campus staff procurement responsibilities. So as to facilitate the quotation process and help out the campus secretary. So we will include in our administrative procedures that teachers should not be processing quotations, that that responsibility will lie on the secretary or the assistant principal's clerk, the counselor's clerk, the library clerk, or the nurse assistant. We will provide mandatory quotation training sessions. Those are in place throughout the school year. We will make a mandatory for all secretarial staff again, including those new, newly assigned clerical staff. Also, purchasing administration will explore resources to identify and implement a specialized software resource for district-wide quotation processing. We already started exploring various options that may be available. And we will be reviewing our findings with administration. As far as requisition approval levels, we discussed during the procurement training, the flow chart. We provided the board with an illustration of the requisition approval process. The campus secretary or department secretary enters a requisition. It travels to the principal for approval or the department head. If there's special funding involved, it goes to that particular director. If it's over twenty-five thousand dollars, that requisition goes to Mr. Joel Trevino for approval and to Doctor Science as well, before it makes it to purchasing. But we don't have the processing place where a, a requisition over twenty-five thousand dollars automatically is automatically routed to the respective superintendent, whether it be Doctor Villarreal or Mr. Ricky Villarreal, Mr. Muñoz, or Ms. Ayala. So with this recommendation, those requisitions valued at twenty-five thousand dollars or more would be routed to those respective assistant superintendents to increase oversight, to increase monitoring of any potential separate or sequential purchases. Next is Mr. Ricky Villarreal. He will review the job order construction process. Before I allow Mr. Villarreal to speak, I would like to highlight to our school board that beginning page twenty, you have all the supporting documentation for the appendices that were cited at the beginning of my presentation. Are there any questions so far on any information that we have covered?
Thank you, Sylvia, and thank you to the committee for the work that was done. I know it takes extra effort, so. Thank you very much to each one of you. On the board policy on the purchasing authority, while I do not want to contribute any delay in the process or I do not want to impact efficiency in a negative way, I would like to recommend that the threshold be reduced from fifty thousand to twenty-five thousand. And I think that this board is committed to providing the support necessary, whether it means an additional staff member or additional clerk or whatever is needed based on you all's recommendation. But I think that given the history of what has happened, I think that we need to demonstrate that we're changing things. And this is a change that I feel is necessary. I don't know how the other board members feel, but that's just me. That's my opinion, my recommendation. And I'm committed to providing the support necessary, but I would like to see it changed.
We definitely would need additional administrative support to take on that type of, of task. But certainly, we will.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Zapata. Let me see if I understand this right. Even though, let's say they have a, they come in and they, we're needing ten thousand dollars, okay? It doesn't have to come to the board. It can be done, okay? But if they have purchased twenty-five thousand, like what Ms. Doctor B is saying, it still doesn't have to come to the board. But then, once it's twenty-five, I mean, they can keep on going without coming to the board. It doesn't mean that it's going to stop at twenty-five and then come to the board. It's going to accumulate, correct?
Correct.
Is there something that we can do about that? I mean, after the twenty-five, that we, we have it? Let's say they're doing another purchase for ten or five, that, that's, I mean.
That would be up to our school board. We, we understand your point. The way policy is written right now is any single purchase of fifty thousand or above. In the future, if it changes to Doctor Benavides's recommendation at twenty-five thousand and above, it's any single purchase. It does not, policy does not refer to it as the aggregate. If that is the board's desire to change it to the aggregate, there will be surmountable extra administrative burden on, on the procurement process. But we understand your point.
Yeah, because I've seen where we have it at fifty, but then at the end of the year, we see that a vendor has half a million that we, I mean, we went in and we purchased from them. To me, that doesn't make any sense. I mean, we need to keep control of that. And, and I agree, we have to get, you know, other employees. I'm good with that. Because we need to see exactly where the money is spent. At the end of the year, we don't want to go in and see that a half a million or a million was, was purchased, you know, just the way it was done. I mean, we're saying twenty-five, but one time, but it's been doing it, you know, throughout the year.
Right, because of the way policy is written. If it was written differently, then it would follow the point you're making.
Yeah, like I said, that's my point of view. I don't know how the rest feel. But, I mean, it just doesn't make any sense. Only twenty-five, and then at the end of the year, we have this vendor that we have paid, the district has paid over half a million or even more.
What I was going to say, maybe a, a suggestion is like, maybe the possibility of twenty-five, and like you're saying, Ms. Hernandez, maybe every, every board meeting, bringing in a listing of the purchases that were made. Let's say twenty here, twenty there, and twenty, in, in different dates per se, bringing a report to the board. Is that something that we might consider? Bringing to the board a listing of the purchases that were, of the purchase orders that were issued versus bringing in for approval each, every time, every time before they purchase it.
Or could it be that every time an, an item is brought, let's say at twenty-five, that we also include other purchases made? When the board, that way, when they're ready to approve or not approve a purchase, they see the history of that vendor. Something like that would help.
Yeah, I think that's what, because I know we've talked about it in our committee meetings. And I think we all agree with Doctor Benavides with the point she made. The reason, one of the reasons that we wanted to bring it down was to avoid something like what Ms. Hernandez is saying, where it becomes cumulative and then it kind of goes under the rug, like nobody really sees it till the end of the year, maybe, or when somebody requests to find out how much that vendor has been paid. So maybe something where, I don't know, I really don't know if it would be too difficult to just give us an accumulative, maybe, monthly instead of at the end of the year, when that's when we find out, oh, my gosh, this person's received half a million.
Similar to what I was saying, like a report of all the purchases that were issued during that month for, by, by vendor. Not necessarily, that could be maybe ten transactions of twenty thousand each that didn't require for, to come in for board approval, but you would see those in a report vote.
Could a rotation of vendors maybe help? Do we have a rotation of vendors for specific, you know? And I'd say we have three or four vendors and one of them always, or two of them get the job. I mean, maybe, maybe we have a rotation of vendors, maybe that'll help in this case.
Which is what we had spoken before at a previous work session. So I just feel that we need to put some of our words into action.
That was discussed during the work session. Mr. Joe Villarreal, when he addressed the job order contract process, he spoke about rotation of vendors. As far as other categories, it would be extremely difficult to rotate vendors, for example, with the educational materials bid. Because not all vendors provide all goods and services. Consultant services contracts, the same thing. Now, in construction, I can see how the process would lend itself very well to the rotation of vendors.
Well, maybe, I agree with Mr. Cantu. I'm, we're thinking, well, I'm thinking, and tell me if I'm interpreting wrong, but I'm thinking like when we have transportation services, when we have maintenance services, when we're trying to help our local vendors, we want to give all of them an opportunity, and that's when we want a fair rotation.
Yes.
That's, that's what we're alluding to. And that's what we had mentioned when we spoke to Mr., when Mr. Villarreal made his presentation.
And, and I believe that's included in his presentation. Or, let's see. Now, I wanted to make a comment on, a follow-up comment on Doctor Cantu's comment regarding the purchases slipped under the rug. All purchases that are processed through the purchasing department are highly scrutinized. So we make sure that those purchases are approved through vendors awarded through our school board or the purchasing cooperatives, that they are purchasing compliant. That, that there may be departments with certain needs or certain tendencies of keeping purchases under a certain threshold. We're not going to deny that. We see purchases sometimes coming through at forty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. Okay, so those are obvious and we address them. And it's, and we can drop our, our threshold to the twenty-five. But again, more than likely, we're going to see those purchases again coming through at twenty-four thousand, nine hundred. So we, we are committed to following the board's new direction in regards to policy. But there's just so much we at the purchasing department can control. We're going to make sure that the purchases coming through our department are legal. Okay, we're going to make sure of that, as we have in the past. Sometimes, no matter how much we tighten a control, a devious person is going to be a devious person. And I, you know, and I hate saying that, but it goes down to the integrity of every individual.
I, I have, I have a comment there. And it's, and it's, and it's, in your department, I mean, it does, does an amazing job. But whenever you have those, you encounter those kinds of situations, then there needs to be consequences. And if we act on those consequences right there and then, the others will fall into place. But there has to be some sort, you said, we dropped the threshold to twenty-five and you see twenty-nine, nine, nine. Well, what did we do about it? We need to do something about it right there and then to make sure that it doesn't continue. And, and I know you all are stacked with a lot of work. I mean, it's, it's crazy, but. And we're, I think as a board, we're, we're here to support you all, make sure you have the adequate and the personnel that you need. And if you need more personnel, that's fine, as long as things get done the right way. And, and those departments maybe need, need to, you know, need a, we need somehow to, to, to fix those problems.
Accountability. Yes, sir. And we will address that with Doctor Science and her cabinet.
Yes, and it comes down, Ms. Zapata, to just working together. We support you with, you tell us, like right now, you said that would require this. Okay, we're told about it, then maybe we can help you, and what we can do as well. And so, because like we said, if we bring down the threshold, just like you say, well, now it's going to be twenty-four, nine, 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 or, you know, just ways that we can improve that. But by all means, your department and yourself do an amazing job. We're just trying to see how to better the situation or how better we can bring this transparency and changes if we have to.
We have a great team. We're very blessed in having a high caliber purchasing team.
And, and we're recognizing the work that you do, but you also have to understand that once the Texas Education Agency comes in, we need to show that we made changes and that things are not as usual as a result of what the district has been through. And it's nothing against you all or your department. We know you have an excellent purchasing department. But we have to demonstrate that we are making changes to address anything that comes along that we may have not addressed in the past. And that's, that's the reason for our recommendations, okay?
Thank you, Doctor B.
On the code of silence, I'm, I'm impressed at how different things get different names, but that's very, it's a good name. Do you know of other districts who have this and how would it be enforced?
Yes. So I remembered actually having seen the code of silence posted on the Spring ISD website. I, I keep in close contact with several purchasing directors throughout the state. In, in the purchasing world, the more networking we do, the better, the more efficient and the more compliant we're going to be. And so Philip, who oversees that department, is a dear friend. And so I remembered they had that posted in Spring ISDs. And so that's one of the, that's one of the school districts, but there's more. If you're interested, Doctor B, in finding out which other school districts have it in place, I can certainly research their board policies or their websites. The way it works is that when we, when we issue a bid, it would automatically go into code of silence mode. And so we, we would post that in our purchasing webpage. And, and so that code of silence would be invoked at that point and it would be in effect all the way through contract award. So during that period of time, any vendor or organization interested in doing business with our school district through that procurement would have to abstain from having any type of communication with our school board or administration. Now, that's not to say that the evaluation committee cannot contact the vendor if questions arise. That's different. We, we would have the ability to do that. Now, we're not confined just to formal procurement. It would also include any other purchase that we are processing. So say, for example, that we would be purchasing instructional software. And instructional software is one of the categories that are exempting coming before the board for approval. So say, for example, we, we, we are in the market to purchase instructional software. We can post that particular procurement in our purchasing webpage, alerting the vendor community that we have invoked the code of silence for that procurement. And so we would add that process to our document on how to do business with La Jolla ISD, et cetera. So we would make sure, we can, we would email all vendors registered in our system, alerting them that our school board of trustees has approved that CAA regulation. So we would do our due diligence in making sure that the vendor community is informed.
I have, I have a question. I would be, well, go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead.
Okay. My, not so much how many other people are using it, but what's the consequence if it's violated?
Oh, okay.
So that, that part we don't have here, but maybe we need to look into that.
Yes, we, we can come up with a plan as far as not doing business with the district forever or for five years. So, you know, some type of penalty.
I think that vendors need to know, and I think that we need to be strict about it. Because it sounds really good that we have a code of silence and it's going to be communicated in the bid process and all that. But what if? And so that would be more, not, I'm not really interested who else does it, but what are the consequences for people who violate?
And it would be not only if vendors violated, but if employees violated as well.
Yeah, and what would be the consequence for an employee?
Would, having the bids publicly opened, like invite the vendors to come in and open the bid, have sealed bids and publicly open them, would that help the process?
We already do that. We're, yes.
So all the vendors are invited to open? So, all the vendors are invited to open up the?
Yes.
I loved in your quotation process. And I also want ways of how it's going to be monitored, that the teachers not be involved processing quotations. Especially because I know our fine arts people, our coaches sometimes are involved in that. And I think that their first responsibility is to the students, and they have enough to do. And maybe even other instructional materials that they have to be checking. You know, they want a certain thing, and they have to be checking. So, I really like that, but I want to know how it's going to be enforced, so that teachers are not having to give up their time to do, to work on quotations. Those are all the comments that I had. I don't know if any other board member has any other comment.
Thank you very much for your recommendations.
Thank you, Zapata.
Thank you.
All right, so, good evening. And to end this part of the presentation, we, in the job order process, construction part of this presentation, we will go over the current processes, which was going by the RS Means and City Price Index utilized, and in which quotations, multiple quotations, are not required. The recommendation from the committee was, one, to require two quotations for all job order contracts valued at ten thousand and less than fifteen thousand. The second recommendation is to require three quotations for all job order contracts valued at fifteen thousand and above. The third recommendation would be to include an administrator from outside the facilities department in the evaluation committee for projects at fifty thousand and above. For example, athletics or agriculture, right? We might need somebody from there that might have more insight and know-how for fifty thousand and above. And then, number four, the fourth recommendation, was to implement a checkoff list for any quality assurance within, which would be like a punch list to log and document that the project was done in accordance with policy. And then, number five, a process, new formal solicitations for job order contract vendors, rather than renewing the existing job order contract vendor lists to make it more equitable. Finally, these controls will promote a fair evaluation of proposals, including their respective recommendations. This additional level of transparency will assist the district in maintaining the highest level of credibility and neutrality. Additionally, the quotations process will promote stimulation of additional competitive procurement, thus reducing the exposure of purchases that escape the required quotation processes. Doing so will also promote obtaining the best value while increasing accountability for all of us and our stakeholders. Any questions in reference to the recommendations?
Yes. When did we start the job order contract process?
The job order contract process? I've been, that I'm aware of, I believe it was, I don't have that answer with me, but I believe it was about five years before I got here. I've been here for two years. Who, Ms.?
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty nineteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. So, that was, yes, it's four years.
I would like to stop.
Sure.
The job order contracts. What did we used to do before?
Prior to the job order contract, I do not have that answer for you. If I could have Mr. Joel or Ms. Zapata.
I know it took us a lot to get to that point. We fought it for a while, and we didn't have it. And then, we eventually had it. And so, I'd like to know, from my memory, just what did we do before we had job order contracts?
Dr. B, I remember previously, we used to have trade bids, RSPs, where we asked for proposals in place. But, and I'm not the guru when it comes to construction. Mr. Castillo can help us here. But there was a revamping of the construction laws. And so, that's when the government code twenty-two sixty-nine, twenty-two sixty-nine came in effect. And so, there was a lot of discussion going on regarding some trade work, whether it was actually trade work, like plumbing services or construction, et cetera. And to protect the district from any type of noncompliance, we decided to try out the job order contract method, because it's one of the methods approved by the state. And so, that's when we started the process, and we've added, we've processed, we have three job order contract CSPs in place. Now, what we, what the committee is recommending here is that those job order contracts that are in place, because we were ready to bring before the board the renewal for the last term on those job order contracts. So, what the committee is recommending, the committee recommends that we bring them before our school board for rejection, and we start fresh, we start brand-new. With the volume that we have in our school district, we cannot afford not having resources available for Mr. Villarreal's department, for our facilities department, to tap into for minor jobs. The job order contract is specifically for minor jobs. Any major construction has to be processed through the formal competitive sealed proposal process. But we're not, we no longer have the liberty of having, like, electrical supplies or plumbing supplies or those type of trades services, because they're considered construction. And so, that's the reason why we started exploring the jobs since back then. But we can start fresh with a brand-new slate of vendors. Mr. Villarreal's department can do the rotation, et cetera. We, the committee recommends that we have a person outside of the department as well for the purchases over fifty thousand. So, we're applying all the same principles that we are applying to the regular goods and services to construction as well. So, whereas right now, his process does not require quotations, now they will. Over ten thousand dollars, two quotes. Be, over ten and below fifteen. Over fifteen, three quotes. And so, these are based, these jobs are based on the RS Means and the coefficient discounts that the vendors give us. So, it can be compared in black and white, using the software. And so, that is what the committee recommends, that we start, that we bring them before the board, they be rejected, we start fresh. And this way, it's, prior administration will not have their name stamped on any documentation that we're currently using.
The reason, yeah, the reason I'm saying this is, I know that this has created a lot of abuse, where people were called in to do special jobs, like painting and different things like that, to give a person a job. And this, there was a lot of latitude by having these job order contracts. And I know I'm aware of that. And so, I just feel that, at the point the district is at, something needs to be done differently. Perhaps you're not, or we're not prepared today to discuss all the possibilities that we could, how we could change it, and we could involve our legal counsel. But I know for a fact that this was an area where there was abuse. And certain people were giving job, were given jobs. And that's something that we should address. And I'm not sure that the quotations will take care of it, because I can still get a quotation, and I can ensure that someone gets the lesser one, so that he can get the job. And I'm trying to prevent that, because I've seen it happen.
I agree with you.
Excellent point. Thank you, Ms. Zapata, for filling us in on that. But yes, we'll take that point and recommendation and work to better.
So, we, would you like for us to bring some other recommendations?
Yes.
As to job order contracts?
Yes, Dr. Science. Some other recommendations that show that we are really tightening the process, and that it doesn't allow for me, as an employee, to call someone and to be able to get that person, to give that person the job. That's the bottom line.
Sure. Yes, ma'am. Good recommendation. Anything, any other recommendations?
And we can have a work session on just job order contracts and how it works, and what's the best way, and study your other options and colleagues across the state, who, how do they do it? And what's the best thing that we can do differently than what we've done before?
Excellent. Anything else? All right, thank you very much. Good evening.
Okay, so, in your, in your binder Board of Trustees, there are separate attachments. So, if you would go past page one thirty-eight, you'll get to this page that's on your screen. It's after page one thirty-eight.
You got it.
Okay, thank you. So, the next part of the presentation regards the second resolution that was approved by the board on March the twenty-third. And this resolution was number twenty-two zero four, which directed administration to review operational procedures and create a, create, create, excuse me, corrective action plan to improve procedures regarding governance. So, if you'll go to the next page, this is an update of what we are working on. So, of course, the issue and the reason for this resolution was the La Jolla ISD Board of Trustees adopted a resolution directing administration to develop an action plan that addresses governance deficiencies in light of two Board of Trustees resigning and pleading guilty to federal bribery and extortion scheme. So, of course, the directive was to address the following areas. So, in that resolution, these three points were made. Strengthening of local board policies that address school board governance and limit school board's involvement in the recommendation of district vendors and contracts. That we begin to take all necessary steps and develop a timeline to start the Lone Star Governance Training and Governance Model at La Jolla ISD. And that we engage with a governance, governance coach to ensure La Jolla ISD Board of Trustees act appropriately in its role as the governing body of the district. So, the objective of this status update is to inform you of the current steps administration is taking to address directives in this resolution. So, the first update is, La Jolla ISD administration and legal counsel have been working to address the directives of the board to ensure an adequate and robust plan of action can be brought before the board for approval. So, specifically, to strengthen local board policies that address school board governance and limit the board's involvement in recommendation of a district's vendors and contract, administration has been working with legal counsel to identify specific board policies that can be amended or new policies that can be created to be adopted by the board that creates a systems of checks and balances in the purchasing and acquisition of goods and services. So, a new policy proposal will be CHJ Local that prohibits board members from directly recommending vendors for goods and services to any school employee except the superintendent. Amendments to current policies to prohibit board members from recommending specific employees to serve on any purchasing committee established by the district. And to create a board operating procedures committee that includes district administrators to create a governance framework on how the Board of Trustees interact with administration when requesting information from the district, including information about the acquisition of goods and services. Is there any question on that, those policy or that policy proposal?
There's no question, just a comment. My previous comments allude to that, to those on number one.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Number two, to begin to take all necessary steps and develop a timeline to start the Lone Star Governance Training and Governors Model, Governance Model at La Jolla ISD. Administration has already begun the development of the timeline. However, administration notes that the Lone Star Governance Framework is best managed when we have a school board of seven. The timeline will be updated and worked on when the board is complete to proceed accordingly. If you turn to the next page, you do see the timeline of actions that the board and administration has taken towards that Lone Star Governance Training, which began on January nineteen, twenty-twenty-two, when the Board of Trustees approved to adopt the Lone Star Governance Framework. Also, at that board meeting on January nineteen, twenty-twenty-two, the Board of Trustees approved the Lone Star Governance Training for school board members. Between January thirteen and February twenty-four, we began communication with TEA to schedule that training. On January twenty-fourth, TA recommended that we begin to work with Region One Education Service Center to schedule the training, which we did from January one to February's, excuse me, from February one to February seventh. On March nine, we do have two board items included on the board agenda, which was discussion and possible action to appoint a board member due to a vacancy to the position of place five of La Jolla ISD School Board, and discussion and possible action to appoint a board member due to a vacancy to the position of place six of La Jolla ISD School Board. No quorum was held at this meeting, so this meeting was postponed. On March twenty-third, board members received information on the timeline to appoint two board members, which is July thirteen, twenty-twenty-two, for place five, and September sixth, twenty-twenty-two, to place six. For July twenty-twenty-two, we have tentatively scheduled the Lone Star Governance Training with Region One. And then, going back to the previous page for number three, which, on the resolution, which is to engage with a governance coach to ensure La Jolla ISD Board of Trustees act appropriately in its role as the governing body of the district, La Jolla ISD will be bringing a list and resumes of potential governance coaches to the board for their review and selection. So, these have been updates on the work that administration has done to comply with the two resolutions that were approved on March the twenty-third. And we will bring any additional action items or information to the board at subsequent work sessions and board meetings. Are there any questions or any comments on either of these two action plans?
We were just noting on the March twenty-third, it wouldn't have been the?
April thirteenth? Isn't that when we found out?
Maybe it was, I apologize, yes.
Because it was just last week.
It was last week, you're correct. You're correct. Thank you for that correction.
And also, Ben, if you can just check, not that I don't trust you guys, but I thought that the date was July the 5th. I know I counted the days and it was July 5th, but I know at the board meeting, it said July 13. Not that it, not that it makes a difference because I know that we would probably have to make an appointment before that because in July, the board, I mean, the central office is usually closed the first two weeks of July, so definitely it would have to be done before. But I just want to make sure that this, that date is correct.
And I do apologize, Dr. Benavides, because you did make that point on April 13 and I have not checked.
I even told you that I counted too and it was July.
So here's, uh, here's where it, why we're landing on, on the 13th. It's because when a trustee submits a resignation and it's not accepted by the board, it is automatically accepted eight days after it's submitted. So that's why you're going from the 5th to the 13th, those extra days.
And I thought, okay, then I, I'm wrong. I thought that because we didn't take it to the board, it was effective immediately when it was submitted, so I counted.
There's a time period.
From January 7th for Mr. Garza and then, of course, March 4th for Mr. Salinas. Okay, no, that makes sense.
So the, the counting is correct, right? But we just did it, the, the eight days were not included in there?
The eight days before it becomes official.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's great. I just needed to not have that clarification because when asked, I wanted to have correct information, but that explains it. Any other board member that has any other comments on?
If there are no other questions, that was the conclusion of our presentation for budget work session number three. Is there any questions?
I like the fact that we're going to have a list of resumes for potential governance coach that will have an opportunity to do this, to, because there's very limited coaches.
Just a clarification, it just would resume the, the?
Yes, yes, yeah. I'm sorry?
It, it just wouldn't be random people that?
No, no, no. Whoever is an approved coach by TEA, yes. No. Any other questions? I know Mr. Trevino says that this concludes our, our work session. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. This work session is adjourned. Thank you to each one of you for your presentations and for the work that you did to prepare. This work session is adjourned at 7:05 PM.